Okay, let's start this, call this meeting of the Hazel Planning Commission to order. First item of business is roll call.
Meyer, Welch.
Here.
Green, Coleman.
Here.
Azier.
Present.
Weddington.
Here.
Plummer.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Next item of business is the approval, presentation approval of the minutes of November 14th, 2019.
The date's wrong. On the printed copy, the date's wrong. Oh, okay. I've already changed it.
The date, oh, oh, it's not the 14th.
The one you're looking at right now. I'll make a motion to approve it with the changes.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve, changing the date at the top. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does it pose? One abstention? Under new business, we have consideration of the 2020 master review calendar.
This is a list of all the things that we're supposed to review any year. Just my proposal. Based on how long some of these might take, I don't know how closely we'll stick to this, but we'll try.
So if we're supposed to review them every year, um, you want to take this year and have actual discussion on every one?
I would like to. Just for my information.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just clarifying. We haven't done everything wholesale for a while, so it's probably not a bad idea, especially with fresh eyes. But you're right, it's...
Now, I mean, if you guys want to divide it and say, you know, these ones will hit this year heavy and next year we'll do the others.
Do you recall what we hit significantly in the last couple of years?
Not much. Let's kind of look at it, and it's close enough.
I think park plan and the bike are the newest.
Yeah.
And there's so many new members.
But again, fresh eyes also, I think, would be advantageous for us to go through it all pretty closely. So, any other discussion on the calendar?
I'd move it way through the calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion second to approve the calendar as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does it pose? The next item is consideration of the 2020 closing calendar.
This is when people would need to submit their issues, mostly for zoning condition uses to hit the public hearing deadlines.
And this is in line with the other small communities in the area, right? We did that a few years ago to make it...
I believe so.
And we're updating that so that we don't necessarily need 16 copies or whatever we were asking for before, if it is a plat?
Right, yeah, and that's in our subdivision regulations.
Yeah. Any other discussion on the closing calendar?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Deb. Motion second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Does it pose? Next item is consideration of revisions to the subdivision regulations.
Well, I thought yesterday that it should have been helpful if I had given you a summary of the changes, so I made one like this night or yesterday. So that's in front of you, you might kind of explain. Most of it's what we discussed the last time you guys met. And a lot of it, large part of it is just kind of cleaning up the language, some of the references and formatting. There were some spots that it was obvious what the intent was, but there were a couple of words left out, or maybe it should be broken down a little bit to make it more clear. Then in, like, Article 1, kind of changed some of the criteria for the exemptions in the unincorporated areas and the process for considering the exemption status. And that, before, there was no set, you know, what do you need to provide us to consider you to be exempt? Not that we deal with a lot of that.
No, but this looks pretty extensive. You want to cover that in a little bit more detail, just so we know?
The exemptions, sure.
Yeah.
So, I think the biggest thing is that it wouldn't have, it's not going to create any new streets or utility easements, but if any would be required, then maybe those are dedicated through a separate instrument. But if it's a major, if they're going to need streets to get to that property or major easements to get those utilities to that site, then they wouldn't be allowed to get the exemption. And, let's see, I'm trying to remember everything here. We want to make sure we're not land-locking anything that's a residential usage only and that the drainage is approved by the proper governing bodies. And they do have to provide the city with the recording instruments and the legal descriptions. And then it does set a timeline for me on how many days I would have to look at it, so we're not making people wait too long. And there's some accountability.
Good. So this is just laying out circumstances for the exemptions, where they wouldn't have to bring a full plat to, in front of the planning commission. And that makes it a staff-administered, rather than the full budget, and the fees and everything that come with that. So the next major change, then?
I changed the administration and enforcement to reflect more of what actually has been happening, I would say, in the last 20 years, but...
Okay.
There were a lot of duties that were under the, you know, like the transmitting, everything was in the city clerk's designation, but really that's through the planning and zoning department, so I put a lot of duties under the zoning administrator that were either listed elsewhere for the zoning administrator to handle or that has just historically been how it's been handled for processing. So some of those have changed. Now, for instance, under duties of the planning commission, some of those things that I marked off doesn't mean that if somebody doesn't ask, obviously you can inform people of the procedures, but typically people call the city staff for that information.
Okay.
And then I didn't find in here where we'd actually stated that there would be filing fees, so I wanted to make sure that that was in there. And then, interpretation in construction, these are just generic texts that's in a lot of zoning and subdivision regulations.
So the reason for not laying out the filing fees is so we don't have to update this every time we...
Okay. Change them, yeah.
Just making sure.
Then on the definitions, there were just some that were referenced throughout that I thought needed to be added. And also, streets, for instance, many different types of streets were in there. Now, they were in alphabetical order, but to me, it made more sense to put them all under streets.
Okay.
Because that's probably where I would look first.
But we didn't change any of the actual definitions, we just moved them around?
No, a lot of those. I did add a few under the lot, the different types, the reverse drainage, corner lots, through lots. Defined plan unit development. And then there were some things that were tied to, like drainage and floodplain regulations that have been adopted. And then procedure for approval, this one I figured would be the most discussion, because it is a bit of a change. We had discussed before getting rid of the subdivision committee and there being a staff review. And I kind of put in pre-plating conference, that would be at a staff level, multiple members.
Okay.
So if you want to look at that, let me know what your feedback on that is. With smaller subdivisions, not necessar, they wouldn't be required to have that conference, but it would be recommended if they do. And that would just be a sit-down with whatever city staff is needing.
So for vision triangle, do we have that laid out on the website somewhere?
As a visual?
Yeah.
It is in our sign regulations, I believe, but I want to move it to the zoning. But we could put it in subdivision as well.
My point is, as long as it's somewhere and we reference where it's at, we're not saying anything in here that's actually helpful if we're trying to determine what the side triangle is.
Right.
I know why it's in the signing ordinance now. That's most of the time when it's going to come up, because you're putting a sign in front of your business. But if you think putting it in the zoning regs makes more sense, then...
As long, I'm with you, as long as it's somewhere.
As long as we have it referenced, yeah. Probably you and I are the only one here that ever even considered vision triangles or anything, anyway.
And I have a big issue with that one, but it's okay. The sign's up.
The one right out here?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they got a variance for it, so it's on there.
It's okay, it's not like there's a 10-foot path going in front of it or anything. All right, what's next?
Okay. Oh, I did remove the sketch plan. And did just preliminary plat, if people wanted to present a sketch plan, they could. But it seems that people are kind of going away from requiring sketch plans.
That's just an alternative first step that goes away once we add the, gotcha.
And then just some additional text about timing and recordings that are statutorily required. And most of them are kind of in here, it's just changing a little bit of the wording and where they're at. And then I added phase developments, which would be, you could adopt a larger or approve a larger preliminary plat, but then they would do the final plat in phases.
Yeah, that's pretty common, too, right?
It is. And it's, now it's past the time, so you'd have to go through again, but Country Lakes was actually done that way. And then, the process for doing final plats for the smaller tracks that would be more condensed, they could present a preliminary final at the same time.
Do we call out in here anywhere, I know we require drainage plans. Do we have anything in here that says when we trigger a traffic engineering study? Or in any form at all?
I don't believe, I don't recall that.
That's something, it's something that we need.
Okay.
And it could be the discretion of the planning coordinator or whatever, but it makes it easier for us if we know something's coming that's not huge, but still big enough that somebody should look at drive counts or something, just so it's in here and we reference it.
So we could put that in the additional data and information to be submitted with the preliminary plat?
As long as it's worded in such a way that it's not required for everything, but it's at the discretion of the planning coordinator. And then if the planning coordinator's not sure, she can call me and I can look at it.
Sounds good. See, there were a few changes to the, what's to be included in the contents of the final plat. And a lot of those are tied to floodplain, adding minimum pads and elevations for some of those.
That wasn't on there before.
Some of it wasn't, some of it was. Not enough of it was. I mean, it's in a separate floodplain ordinance, but I think it's good to have it in here.
I agree.
Kind of moved too fast, so...
What page was that on regarding the floodplating?
It's in a couple different spots, starting, let's see, let's see, page 28? And I'm just hitting some of the big ones, there are some small ones, if you guys have any questions on them.
There's also on 33, the big paragraph. When we get to section four, pages 34 and 35, would you break down, that looks like a pretty significant?
Yes. That one is separating public facilities and open space. So if somebody's wanting to acquire land, say they were to ever want to put a highway down here and you knew that that was the area, then providing for the opportunity for the city or some agency to try to purchase it at that time or get it designated at that time of plating, if it's been on a plan somewhere. So that would be for the public facilities. And then for the open space, they could still dedicate a portion or pay in lieu of dedicating it for the 10% that it needs to be, follow the master plan and, but then, let's see. Really, it's just looking at it and making sure it's actual.
So, as part of our plating process, we require, if you develop 40 acres of land, we require 10% to be dedicated as park or open space?
Typically, in the past, it was changed quite a while ago, though, where they could make a payment in lieu of, but this is just kind of detailing that needs to be in conformance with some of the park plans, so it's not just land. However, a lot of the dedications are for drainage ways and...
That's my question, is, that's, that's how it was in the early 2000s, and you got a bunch of ponds that now you have to maintain, is that still what the city wants?
It is actually stated in here that, or it should be, to where that would be under the homeowners and they'd need to have a plan for how that was going to be maintained as part of.
Whether it's a park or a, okay.
So, if it's public, there's the opportunity that they could work with the city to go in partnership with developing it, but if it stays private, if it's not going to serve the entire community, then the intent is for it to stay private for the homeowners association to maintain.
Gotcha.
And then I did add, um, land subject to erosion. And again, that just kind of matches with our homeowner. Street standards, it looks like a lot of a change, and there are some, yeah, actually there is a lot. But most of it's just reformatting. But I did keep all the same widths, even though our width requirements are a little wider than a lot of the communities. But I think that that was, at least in the past, something that Hazel wanted to maintain.
Do we make it clear that that's high edge to high edge, or back-to-back, or at some point during the definitions?
I believe it's back-to-back, but...
And if that's the case, then do we have a call-out for standard curb and what that dimension is?
We did face-to-face curb, I bet I was wrong. And... Let's see, curb should be considered to acquire two feet irrespective of construction type. And shoulders are...
That's how it's stated?
Three feet here.
Page 40.
Yeah, is there a way you would like to see it? Pretty sure I just copied that from somewhere.
Well, my question there is, curb and gutter combined is what is typically used, and it's two and a half feet.
Okay.
And the two feet that it's calling out for here is actually the gutter section.
So add curb and gutter, two and a half feet?
Yeah. I don't care if that's, if you want to go a different way, I just want to make sure that we're comparing apples and apples here and everything's very clear on what we're stating, so that we don't get what we don't want.
Right.
Whether we have to call out high edge to high edge, so we get a full 41 or whatever our dimension is, 48, just to make sure that we are clearly stating and making sure that this is what we want.
Okay. Well, that's your area of expertise, so...
It's not true, Deb knows the curb dimensions better than I do. Why wouldn't he even be side to side? We've got a percent grade for vertical curves in here.
I don't see us having a whole lot of that, but...
No, there's not a lot, you'd be surprised. I've designed a lot of roads and I don't think I've put in very many vertical curves, occasionally.
I'm not going to lie, the only reason I added those, after seeing it in six different communities, I'm like, well, I suppose long-term, maybe.
We don't have a section for super elevation? We have parking code separately, or is it just here?
Parking, we have some parking regulations in the zoning.
Just in here? This is subdivision, but in the zoning regs, it's called out as our parking code referenced there, and there's no conflict with what we've got here?
Not that I saw.
Okay.
But this does talk a little bit more about on-street, there are some on-street parking curbs in the, where the zoning ones are for...
Off-street?
Yeah.
Page 45, number 10, you eliminated that whole paragraph.
Yes. That one is, that was just me, and... I don't mind things being recommended, I think sometimes it's good to have recommendations, but it's also recommended in the building code.
Okay.
Is my understanding, which I feel fits more than in the subdivision regulations.
This is also a little bit inflammatory language.
Yeah, it just...
Yeah, I agree.
Most of the lot language that was changed has to do with access controls.
So, why put that language in here and not in the, not, why handle it here and not in the plat itself? Is it for things that redevelop? Okay. So do we call out a number of drives? A maximum number of drives for a commercial property?
No.
Do we say in here that that is to go, drive locations are subject to...
Engineer. It's basically to engineering.
Can we not have more control over that?
Sure we can.
I would rather us do it than...
Okay.
The specific thing I'm thinking about is on Main Street, where McDonald's and a liquor store and all of that. All those drives right there with O'Reilly's and McDonald's, and they're all way too close together, and if more thought was put into that, eventually, we're going to have to put in a left-turn lane. The whole four-lane functions as a three-lane now anyway because of it. But the way those drives are set up and the way they're offset, those vehicles trying to turn left into either side are trying to occupy the same space. If they were offset the other way, it wouldn't be a problem. So I want to avoid that somewhere else. And I don't want to rely on the engineer.
Well, since you brought that area up, I don't know that, where this would go or if it's, if it's even ours, but McDonald's drive-through is, you're waiting for a major incident to happen when somebody has a heart attack once they get in that line. And you can't, you can't get out. It never should have been approved like that.
And I'm not sure how you would be able to go back and...
No, I'm sure, but I'm talking from now forward.
Yeah, the whole, the whole point is to make sure that not only the process is set up to prevent that again, but we are all prepared for the discussion of, yeah, we want a McDonald's here or whatever, but we need to make sure this drive isn't going to make our lives miserable for the next 20 years.
I feel that way about any drive through that has a curb around it.
Yeah. Well, and Main Street's basically developed out, and there's nothing we can do about it. But Meridian will be next, and if we don't pay attention to things like that on Meridian, that whole corridor is just going to become a nightmare.
Right.
So what are we adding on 49 for sidewalks?
Basically, that they can, might be required if it's stated in one of our master plans or to connect to schools and areas.
In front of commercial or everywhere?
Anywhere that the, city or planning commission will have designated as, like the bike, cycle, pedestrian, or if a school gets built in a community, they might decide they want sidewalks on one or both sides.
In the way it's worded at six feet wide, do we not want to make that an option for a 10-foot path? If it's part of the master bike, whatever, plan that we know a path is where we want to put there?
Sure.
That would be my suggestion there.
Is that, is that why it was worded that way, because it wasn't necessarily referring to a bike path?
Right, it wasn't necessarily, right. But we can make it more clear that it could be larger.
Well, and I'm not looking at the master pedestrian plan right now either, but if we know that that's a location along a stretch of arterial that we know we want to put a 10-foot path there eventually, it needs to go in as part of that project, so that...
And I did get the six off of as the minimum from the bike plan?
I agree, six is the minimum, but there are locations where we know we want a 10-foot path eventually, and...
Sure. And then the storm sewer was just making sure that we have the capacity... And then the storm sewer was just making sure that we have the capacity before anybody hooks on to our storm sewer planning.
So we are not servicing anywhere north of the big ditch currently? With storm sewer, with sanitary sewer, sorry.
Sanitary sewer, we would be, we're towards four, yeah.
Okay, that's the only location? And water? Is that the only location for water also or do we have?
To the best of my knowledge, that's the only place that's giving water.
Okay.
Is anything between? I can't remember if we were servicing any of those properties between Meridian and Seneca off of sixty-third.
I don't think so. But I wasn't sure about.
But south of sixty-third from Broadway or from Seneca to Broadway, those are all serviced?
Yes. Can you think of another area?
I thought I remembered that we had some water service across sixty-third to those houses just on the north side of the street.
No, that may be true, because that's not hard, that's not hard to get there.
Where, where?
On the other, on the west side of sixty-third, south of the ditch. The west side of Meridian. Sixty-third jogs there and becomes a dirt road on the south side, there's a whole row of houses. Bob thinks we are serving them with water.
Is that where you're talking about?
No, I was talking about the north side of sixty-third, between railroad and Broadway.
Okay.
So there's just one, there's not very many houses along.
There's not very many, but it was just a case of.
I think that's Tucker's property right there and then Blood has open land there.
Yeah. So it's not fully developed by any.
No. But you think we went across?
I think so. For a long time.
Any other significant changes you want to discuss?
Uh, I think. The others, the underground wiring and the fences along arterials has just kind of been in practice.
Yeah.
Not necessarily requirement, so I've just added those. Uh, the other is the financial guarantees section, the improvement procedures. That was changed. What page? Fifty-three, fifty-two. As I was reading it, the way it was, and it's kind of broken up in here now. Some of the sections, I think were supposed to be divided out and there were some words left out in different places, so that was cleaned up. The, we talked about at the last meeting, taking away the percentage requirement and not having that language in the subdivision regulations, that could be a different policy through the governing body. So that's different. For the most part, the practices are all the same, it's just wordy and more clearly. And then the other big change, I guess, would be under building permits. Currently, if they need to get any permit, it has to be platted.
It has to be platted?
Mm-hmm, so if, and that actually just came up. Because there's some properties still in Lamar that have never been platted, where maybe they want to redo the inside, but the way, if you strictly. It has to be platted before any permit could be issued. So I'm recommending if it's maintenance or doing some changes, but it maintains the footprint of the building, that would be okay.
That's an exception to having to replat. Or not replat, plat. I agree with that.
So for ones that maybe are smaller than you do the planning exemption for?
But if you're on a five acre, five acre track that is unplatted, but you own it, you can't build a house without plating that like favorite, five acre track.
So it'd be different than the ones where we're, they qualify to grant planning exemption, the larger tracks. This would be for smaller that have already been developed that are in the city that, you know, they just want to improve it a little or maybe they want to do a minor expansion, but wouldn't necessarily.
So you're talking, it's already got a, a home on it. But the ground itself.
Has never been platted. For instance, the person that recently came to apply wanted to convert the garage into a living space. Probably not a major change that would require any plating or anything, but it doesn't change the use and it doesn't change the outside footprint of it, but they would have to plat in order to do that. The way it states right now.
What are the fees?
Just a recommendation.
What are the fees for that?
For plating, I think the biggest fee is gonna be the surveying.
Oh.
It's only a forty-some dollar fee for the city to get applied. The cost would be in the process.
Yeah.
The engineer's survey. Neighbors and the stuff that you're talking about?
Well, to do a plat, yeah, you'd have to go to the notification of all your neighbors and.
You don't have to, you can notify. So it's not required.
That's not part of our process for a plat?
For a public hearing, no, for notification.
Really?
Just for zoning.
For a zone change.
But there is the provision in here that if planning feels we need to notify adjacent areas, we could require an ownership list and then notify those people.
Okay.
And that non-plating would be for residential only.
And there can't be that many of it.
There really aren't, it'd really just be about five or six properties in ten.
I'm surprised that there are any actually.
There's just a few and some of these. I was surprised by that one.
Any other discussion?
Page three, under the accountability, that thirty day, is that thirty calendar days or thirty business days?
Thirty calendar. According to the attorney, fourteen and under is business days, fifteen and above is calendar days.
Any other questions about the subdivision regulations?
I found one thing on page two, there's a section blank. I think it should be VI. But I don't know that.
I think there's one other place where I forgot to go back and put the section number in. And a lot of it, I really have a love hate relationship with the redlining function. Because it really does mess your formatting up, I mean going back and looking at the numbers. Those want to be corrected.
And on page forty-five, you've got a corner radius of twenty feet. And that's probably okay for cars. If you're going to have any semi-trailer traffic, that's not even close. I don't know how you handle that or what makes the decision.
Well, this is talking about lots, you're talking about item eleven. Lots located at an arterial street intersection or at an intersection with an acute angle, which is, which in the opinion of the planning commission is likely to be dangerous to traffic movement. Shall have a radius of twenty feet at the intersection of street, rights of way on business, commercial and industrial lots. So we talking about, is that a drive radius? That's not a arterial corner radius.
Yeah, that's strange, isn't it?
I mean, ideally, if you've got the room for it, you want a fifty-foot radius, not.
Honestly, I don't even think I meant to put that one in there.
I agree.
Because I'm not even remembering this one at all, so.
Well, that, he brings up a good point and I'll put Quick Shop out there as a prime example. Our commercial radiuses should have a minimum of twenty feet.
Okay.
And more if we can get it, but the ten-foot or whatever is at Quick Shop right now is simply not acceptable.
Okay.
You have to come to almost a complete stop in the through lane before you can make a right turn and then getting out, you're just, you can drive by and look at it, you're just tearing up the grass next to it and it's a big hole. So commercial drive should have a minimum radius of twenty feet. I think this is talking about the actual arterial street. And that radius should be preferably fifty. And only go down from there if you can't physically fit all the equipment and ramps within the right of way. But all of that should be happening on platted streets where you've got a hundred and twenty foot at the intersection, so. Shouldn't be a big deal.
And finally, on page fifteen, in parentheses, you've got something about traffic calming. That's a, I don't know what it is. It's a name of a procedure that some organization has. And I'm not sure.
On page fifteen?
Fifteen.
What section or what word? I'm not finding it.
Yeah, I'll see.
I'll have to look. Traffic circle roundabout?
Oh, okay, I think I might have emailed out the wrong one initially, because I took that out.
Oh, okay, that's not on my page fifteen.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Anybody else have anything else to comment?
I've got, I'm not clear on the sidewalks on page forty-nine, we're talking about sidewalks. It, do we require sidewalks in a new subdivision or not?
We could require them.
Well, the reason I ask is I, I'm a walker, I'm always walking around and so many streets, especially residential streets, there's no sidewalk, I have to walk in the street. And then I'm curious about future, if we, it seems to me every residential area and resident, that should be a requirement, it should be a sidewalk. But that's not what this says, is that correct?
Right, this is just saying if it's designated in one of the plans.
So it's something we could require.
It's something we require on arterial streets.
Right.
Which is mainline mile roads. We haven't required it in individual subdivisions. And most of the neighborhoods don't have sidewalks. I think the intent is to be able to walk on the city's multi-use paths and the parks. We are developing a pretty good system for that. The question is whether we feel like we want to have that happen in the parks and on the paths or everybody in their own individual neighborhoods. And the thinking in the past has been, if you want to walk in your neighborhood, you can, if you feel like the traffic is low enough and slow enough, it's safe, otherwise we have designated areas for that. And we can certainly have discussion about how we feel about that, but the city's thought in the past has been, rather than putting sidewalks in everybody's front yard, let's put sidewalks in the parks and connect a bike and path systems around town and use those on the arterial streets and in the parks.
So in the future, we could address it at that time for that particular?
We could, but it would only be for new subdivisions that come into the city.
Correct.
The old subdivisions, everything that's already been platted would never have sidewalks unless the homeowners themselves wanted to put them in.
Commend?
Yes.
My understanding was you had to petition for a sidewalk in any given neighborhood. I don't know if that's still a rule or.
You can petition for it.
That is part of a process.
Yes.
So you could, block to block, as I, as I remember, you petitioned for a sidewalk?
Yeah, basically the people that live adjacent to, that would have the sidewalk in their front yard would have to pay for it. So you would have to get many of, if not all of your neighbors to agree to pay for.
Oh, wait a minute, seventy percent, something like.
I don't know, I don't know what the requirement is.
It's a, it's a majority.
I think the question is, does it still exist?
I can look into it, but I can look into it, but I think for any, I know for any utilities or streets, they could petition, neighborhoods can petition.
This would be, I think, for existing neighborhoods.
Right.
Yeah.
And obviously I haven't been here in a while, so I don't know when the recent conversations have been, but I know in the past, the reason it wasn't required for the new subdivisions was who's gonna pay for it? If it's the homeowner, you know, and then you have the vacant lots forever, they don't get done, so you need to require it at development. And then that's added to the specials, which makes it more expensive and less desirable for people to purchase the lot.
And if the people in that subdivision don't want sidewalks running in their front yard, we're requiring to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah.
And safety, there was a brief period of time where they were along the streets, but they found that that's not safe, so it is in the middle of the yards and a lot of people don't like that.
Yeah.
Uh, did I know a few, actually?
No, go ahead.
No, okay. No, that, that, I'm clear. Bob, do you remember if this was a subject in the past on the planning commission?
I think the first thing I heard was that we were putting sidewalks on one side of the street. But it's been a long time.
It seemed like it was discussed in the eighties when I was on the commission, you know, one side of the street or the other. Sorry, I didn't remember.
No, I, I think it's good discussion and if we're not sure why it's that way, talking about what we feel about it now is getting everybody back on the same page. I didn't ever consider sidewalks until about five minutes ago, but I've been pretty solidified in my thinking that in my neighborhood especially, a lot of people run and walk in the streets and traffic is slow enough and sparse enough that that's safe and everybody's comfortable doing it. Um, other neighborhoods, especially some of the older, long, straight streets, I could see where that would be uncomfortable. But I still believe that providing a system of paths through the parks and along the arterial streets is better for not only the population, but also for safety reasons. There's enough people along the arterial that and it's lit better than most neighborhoods, especially once you get back into the, the older areas that maybe didn't require as much street lighting as we require now.
Yeah, to encourage the public to walk in a safer place.
Yeah. That's where, that's where I came down on it anyway. Any other discussion on the subdivision regulations?
For the process now, you can either recommend I make changes and bring it back, recommend it. recommend it with changes, and go ahead and set the public hearing, or you can not approve any of them.
I, I think I trust you to make the changes that we discussed here tonight, and set a date for the public hearing at the first?
February thirteenth would be the first.
February thirteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Motion. Hold on. Yep, making sure I'm in town? Yes. Uh, so, is that so moved?
Yes.
Second, good.
I have a motion in two seconds to make the changes to the subdivision regulations, and set a public hearing date for the subdivision regulations for February thirteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The next item of business is the review of the land use map and consideration of boundary revisions.
Okay, I emailed this map, and the dark lines are what is currently adopted by Hayesville as our future land growth area.
Dark blue?
Dark blue, and then there's this little portion here, that's still black, but-
Oh, yeah.
And so, if you want this growth area in Hayesville, which even though the county goes different from this, you could still keep this large of an area as your future growth area. That doesn't change what our area of influence is, though. But, tonight, you have this sheet. Actually, I think it's larger, but, that highlights what the county has approved for areas of influence, for the urban area of influence. The city would like to request that it be expanded to the blue line that I drew in there, at a minimum, for future growth, and that would be based on the direction that the city's growing currently. People who've come in and talked to the city about proposed developments, and we do extend services down that far, water now.
So, we already covered Meridian all the way up to campus, and include campus?
Right.
And Ruth Clark, but not South Lakes.
Alright, and?
That was my first question, cause that's not reflected on the first map that we have. Or at least it's, it's further north than that map goes.
Yeah, we used to have a, no, that is actually annexed through the city, or through which South Lakes is in this town.
The whole stretch, or island annexation of campus and Ruth Clark?
Island annexation of campus and Ruth Clark, currently. But that we do show growth going there.
Yeah.
We would like to connect those to the city. So, I think what planning needs to decide is how much area you see, or how far you see Hayesville expanding in the next twenty years. Do you want to maintain the three mile that we used to maintain?
Would that take us out to the three mile, both west and south?
This big map would, the other one just goes two miles. We have it applied for expansion through, Cedric County Board of Commissioners did ask the cities if they wanted to expand any of the areas, and there was a deadline, so we did submit that, yes, the mayor would like to expand to eighty-seventh south and Hoover west, and then keep the rest based on the future growth. Because our future land use plan doesn't show that corner of eighty-seventh and Hoover in the plan, they could overlook it, but we have a better chance of it getting approved if we do at least show that corner in our land use plan.
I'm actually okay going all the way to Ninety-Fifth Street, as shown in this bigger map.
I feel it would take a public hearing to change either way, and I know we're looking at the comprehensive plan anyway. I would just, I think it'd be best if we established the lines where you want them now, with the one public hearing, instead of down the line having another public hearing. It's the ones to the east and to the west, I think. I would like some direction on how far you want to go.
I don't see any reason not to go all the way out to Fifty-Fifth Street West, where the highlighter is. And I would welcome discussion on either one of those, if anybody has thoughts, but I know that there is a few plans talking about the southwest loop, most of which include Ninety-Fifth Street as the south corridor for that.
Yeah, isn't there plans to put a bridge over the river down there?
At Ninety-Fifth Street, yeah.
Yeah, so that's going to be kind of a-
Yeah, so I would like to be in, at least involved with the north side of that. I don't, I don't think we need to take any farther than Ninety-Fifth Street South, but as is, if something went in there now with the boundaries we have, there's no reason they'd have to bring anything to us at all. The east boundary is a little different. And I can't recall what agreements we had with the city of Derby and the city of Mulvane from that tri-city. But I know as part of that, we picked a line that everybody agreed to.
Right.
Everybody would agree to.
It is, I know as far as extending services, the further east we go, we'll have to get a water tower on the, on the east side, um, and some other infrastructure. It's more costly, but with, certainly with the development that's already there, out to Seventy-Ninth Street. Definitely foresee that coming into the city at some point.
Well, the real question for me is, who is it going to be easier to get services over there for us or for Derby? Derby's got to cross the river, as far as I know, and I don't think we do. My assumption would be it would easier, be easier for us to get water and sewer to serve those properties if that ever really developed.
Well, Derby's got some, say, south of eighty-seventh?
Wells.
Well, they've got houses over there that are part of Derby, and I don't know how they're serviced.
Does staff have a recommendation for the east boundary?
I, well, I sense a minute, sorry, I'm at hydraulic. I still think hydraulic is probably more realistic for Hazel.
Okay.
Leave it like it is, so if you're saying?
Yeah.
I, I, at least, you know, we can review it again in five years or something, but.
If there's not a reason to change it, I'm fine leaving it. But, if we know we can't service somebody, there's no reason to add them into our area of influence. If we have no expectation that that's going to develop at all, that's the one boundary, to me, that makes sense, that we just leave it where it's at.
Right, with it being in the middle.
That would be county.
Yeah, and the, um, there's, we have all this existing that we'd have to jump over if there were new developments there that wanted the services, where if Derby's growing out, I think that it would be easier for them to service those.
Okay, let's just leave that side there. So, Fifty-Fifth Street North, Fifty-Fifth Street West, Ninety-Fifth Street South, and the weird jagged line on the east.
Okay. So, if you'd like to establish a public hearing to approve those, that'd be great.
We could maybe fold that into a motion.
A motion.
Hypothetically, thank you.
I'll second.
Uh, is that date that you're motioning toward February thirteenth?
Thirteenth would be a good day.
That would be awfully convenient if that was your motion.
That would be my motion.
Is that still seconded yet?
That is still second.
I have a motion in second to accept the boundaries as we just discussed, and set a public hearing date for February thirteenth. All in favor? Those opposed? Review of the South Broadway Corridor Plan.
It's a big plan. It discusses many items, I don't know if anybody had a chance to read it yet. It does talk about transportation, there are some sections that do talk about architectural controls. We have adopted the plan, and there are overlays in the zoning ordinance, so some of the code sections have been adopted. I think it's just good to review and see how much of that the city is still interested in, or how far they want to take it. I saw a lot of conflict when I was going back through the history of it was approved, but then when it came time to enforce it, I don't know that it was really understood how much of the architectural controls were being adopted. So, I think it's good to get direction.
You went back through the minutes, you went back through the minutes to see what was actually adopted and what was not?
Right, the whole thing was adopted, and then in the zoning ordinance, it does lay out the, all that criteria for the overlays, the architectural controls and all those. Um, but then when it came back to set certain boundaries, those boundaries were denied, because at that time, planning and the government body did not want to put that many requirements on the aesthetics of those businesses that are existing.
That's what I recall. Especially for the residences, and for some of the industrial properties over there, that we didn't feel like it, it was set up to be industrial, and trying to force that after the fact seemed a little bit much.
So, I just felt, you know, especially since part of it is in the zoning ordinance, and we're reviewing the zoning ordinance, is to determine how much of that planning would like to recommend we keep, and how much you'd like to see maybe revised or removed. And we can look at the zoning portion as we continue to review the zoning. But it, even the reduced is a lot to read. So, if you haven't gotten through it and you want to look at it again at the next meeting, that's fine. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer, but I think Tim and Bob probably have more answers than I do. I haven't been able to get through it all.
Maybe we should table that till the next meeting.
I thought it was not adopted.
It actually was. The plan was adopted.
Yeah.
And the zoning was adopted, the zoning overlay was adopted.
And if I remember right now, I do think this was my first meeting, that they were discussing this, but the casino and the impact the casino was going to have on, in Hayesville on South Broadway was discussed quite a bit. And I think that has turned out to be nil.
The, and it's hard going back through, I wasn't here and the city attorney weren't here, but after looking at the zoning ordinance, it adopted the overlay and it adopted the map that was attached to it, so that did actually set those zoning districts.
Right, that, all of that I remember adopting, but the approval for, and the governing of exterior improvements for existing businesses, residences, I think where it fell apart, and I don't remember how we pulled that out, but it set zoning for some of the property that we hadn't looked at for, probably ever. And kind of had a plan for how that should all eventually be zoned out. But you're right, the expectation at the time that this was adopted was that this shiny new casino is going to bring all these businesses in, and I don't know that any of that has actually happened. I mean, we can look at even the projected traffic counts, and that alone would probably reset some of the priorities on here.
And the zoning does not talk about any of those design criteria, so.
I don't think we continued with those.
What, these priorities?
And here's-
Yeah.
Where there was also a lot of discussion in the minutes. It says under the design standards, new buildings, new accessory structures in the zoning, so you don't have that. And signage should be consistent with the recommendations of the South Broadway Corridor Plan. Consistency with plans will be determined during review by the zoning administrator, that was a hot topic. From what I recall in the minutes, it seemed like none of the bodies liked it, that it was just up to one person.
Yeah. So, did we modify that at all, or did it just get adopted?
This part was adopted, whatever change was presented was not approved.
Okay.
So, what was already approved stayed, but there were some revisions that went through.
Which was the zoning overlay and, which I think I still agree with.
Since it does still say that new buildings should be done, but it doesn't talk about a whole lot of remodeling. That might have been what didn't get, was the actual.
So, do you want to have us rehash where we are on that?
I would like some direction on where you want to be on that, yes.
So, is everyone clear about where we're at and how we got here? If not, if not, we can take a minute and go through it.
Why don't you do that?
Okay.
That would already be good.
So, the one specific thing that we want to discuss, and where we fell apart after we adopted part of it, stop me if I say something that's incorrect, please, is we adopted the zoning overlay, which was every property along the Broadway Corridor that wasn't currently zoned, we looked at it and said, if, as a corridor, this is how we would like or expect this to develop, so that you don't have industrial next to residential, next to, it laid it all out in a way that made sense and was advantageous to not only the city, but also the property owners that were current. That was adopted. Uh, I don't know that any of that has actually been developed, and i- if it has, I don't, I feel confident in saying it's not because the casino came in. The next thing that happened was there was a, an overlay for the Broadway Corridor that said, if you are in this corridor and you either build a new business or you remodel your business, and for residential, that included painted your house, this body, either, meaning us, gets a say in what you paint, what colors you paint, how many bushes you have, what your sign looks like, all of that. Yeah, um, that came from the document, not from us, and we had a problem with it, uh, and we did not approve that. Uh, and we did not approve that. Is that correct? The overlay?
But it's in the zoning regulations. The overlay is in the zoning regulations. So that's where the confusion is. It was adopted, but then they went back through.
The overall plan was adopted, the zoning was adopted. The overlay, you're saying, was adopted with the zoning.
Right. And then that went out to everybody, which did call out different districts, but it had actually already been adopted, so.
Okay.
I don't know if the intent of it not being approved was to go back and repeal some of these sections and it just didn't happen? Or if the intent was, the, the understanding of all the bodies involved was that this had not been adopted? And that this process was adopting it.
Tell me if I'd say something that you don't agree with, but I agreed that that was a good plan for zoning moving forward with the full expectation that if something didn't quite match that, we were going to be able to discuss it as individual properties. And that was just a plan for how it could and maybe would develop. That part of it I agreed with. Did you feel the same way at the time, if you recall?
My objection was to the changing what was, and I think still is, industrial property to residential.
Or current residential to industrial. Is that what you mean to say?
No.
You mean changing industrial, current industrial to residential?
Or business or whatever, commercial.
Is that on there?
Yeah.
I didn't think there was any residential long-term proposed along that corridor, am I wrong?
It may be commercial, but it, they were getting rid of industrial.
Well, some of the, there was something about the Quonset Hut, the guy that has the, he built a home back there that's right on Broadway. His, uh, I don't know if it's a garage or.
It's not right on Broadway. This is on seventy-ninth off Broadway.
This was up on Broadway.
Oh, north of Grand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, I, I remember there was a lot of discussion about that. About his property. And I believe that there was a change in zoning on that or he was request there. This would cause a change in the zoning there. There was something about that though.
Most of it was that if they sold the property that, and somebody wanted to do work, it, it devalued their property then. They would never be able to sell it, was what most people's argument was. With the architectural restrictions.
We weren't changing anybody's zoning and.
No, but we were changing the plan for their zoning. So that if they did anything, they had to change the, the zoning to agree with the plan.
This does allow for a lot of mixed use in the already residential areas where they could put in a commercial business in some of those homes that are right there behind Broadway.
So I don't want to force anybody to zone their property in a way that they are not comfortable with. I don't care what the consultant said ten years ago. You know, I, at this point, it was probably done as a reactionary measure to the casino when nobody knew it was going to happen. I feel comfortable at this point to say that not much is going to happen. And if it does, we will handle each one of those individually as they come through here. Uh, I don't think it's going to be a mass development like maybe some people thought at the time that that was drawn up.
I think they were anticipating large developments and, uh, commercial businesses going in flooding that area. Or the desire for commercial, new commercial to.
I, I, I don't think that's a concern anymore. And I think that that plan, I, I've always thought that plan went too far. Especially with the overlay. That's, it's a corridor that has been around as an industrial and commercial corridor longer than me, almost longer than Bob. So at this point, I don't know that we're going to force it to become anything that it's not, whether that plan wants it to be that way or not. So I don't know where I'm ending up here.
I think the transportation part of it looks pretty good.
But the trans- transportation part of it was based on traffic projections that, like I said, if we go back and look now, I didn't think those numbers were good back then, and I believe I voiced that opinion, but we can compare them now.
It's very impressive. We could, we could do some counts, um, just to see where we're at. We could update the plan if planning would like. Just adopt portions of it, if there are any that you want, or we can change, I mean, the overlays that are in the zoning, planning could say, especially now that we're doing the whole review, to just go ahead and get rid of all those or change them to a way that you're comfortable with. Um, if you want to give me some direction on what you might want, I could put some proposals together.
Well, my question is this. Knowing that that was done, or my belief that that was done as part of the casino development. That was how many years ago? I have no idea.
I don't know how long that's been on, but it was the first night.
It was long enough ago for me to feel like that casino isn't going to really affect the Broadway Corridor like we thought it could possibly affect Broadway Corridor. So my question is, if we know that that really isn't going to happen, why do we want something different along Broadway than any, everywhere else in town? Every, it should be the same as, in my opinion, as every other commercial property that's on an arterial. We shouldn't try to make it a special area. It's going to develop at the same rate as everything else. And we don't need to have a special protect, protection for that area because of a development that, involving.
Are you saying to get rid of this?
What, that's part of the discussion we're having, but we're, from where I sit, that document was created to protect, protect that corridor from a mass development that could happen because of the casino. I don't think that mass development is coming. I may be speaking too soon. I'll admit that to you, but I don't see that that document is protecting us from anything at this point. It's more of a hindrance for that corridor.
I think also it was, it was intended to, um, possibly create this utopia over there.
Well, and it was, it also laid out some traffic projects for that corridor to supplement the traffic that they thought could go down Broadway to get to the casino. Part of that was the signal improvements at Seventy-Ninth Street, which I think are beneficial. But that's also something that we can do individually without that Broadway Corridor Plan. We can look at current counts and the county can look at current counts, which may be more appropriate, or the state highway, since it's Highway eighty-one. It's not just us at this point. We have mechanisms involved to solve all of these problems without the Broadway Corridor Plan. So from where I sit, and I'm welcome to as much discussion as you guys would like to have about this, I don't see that that benefits us the way it was originally intended.
I think it possibly hinders us on some things.
I think, I agree with that.
I agree with that. I think it was M A P D trying to take our industrial development away.
I don't know how to make this motion, um, because I know that that's really intertwined with what we have. But is there some way we can extract the things that that did and still leave some of the, no, I don't want to say that part, because I think we can, I think we can do a zoning and comprehensive plan for that area individually as part of the whole overall comp plan with how we'd like everything to develop without looking at that at all. So is there a way to extract that from our current code?
You can repeal that from both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance.
Does that, does that take a public hearing?
Ultimately it will, but it could wait until we go through the comp plan and then when we re-adopt the whole thing, just not have that text that adopts this.
Okay.
And same with the zoning, we can go ahead and repeal it and just, when we do the whole massive zoning update that we're working on, go ahead and get rid of those at that time.
And, uh, this is a little unorthodox, but you as staff don't get a vote, but I'd like your opinion on whether you think removing that is something that should be considered?
I think it is because I believe in, it was adopted in twenty-twelve. I don't see where any of it has been.
Implemented?
Not very much of it has. There is the signal.
But the,
But.
The sig- the signal is a separate piece of, that probably would have happened anyway, and the fact that that identified it doesn't necessarily give that any more credit in my mind than.
But I think if you're not going to look at it and actively try to incorporate it, if it doesn't have the things that you're intending in,
Yeah.
then no, I don't see the point in having it.
Okay.
It's my personal opinion.
Is there any budget money set aside for this project in the city budget at all?
It's not.
Not anywhere, no money tied to it, okay.
Do you need anything from us at this point then regarding that, like tonight?
She needs a motion and a second to do something.
Does she?
Yeah, I think so.
Just to, as part of the review, yes, you need to say kind of what your intent for it is. So if, and that way then we can incorporate it in the future plans, so. Or remove it from future plans.
Since the development envisioned by that plan has not developed, I would move that we remove that plan from our documents.
You're done? Is he done?
Yeah, he's done.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and second to remove the South Broadway Corridor Plan and its recommendations from not only the comp plan, but anything else that it has affected in our code. Uh, I think that covers it. All in favor? As opposed? Okay. Uh, under Old Business, we have a review of the zoning ordinance. Please bring your copy.
So I didn't bring on any extra because it looked like it was going to be a long meeting. But I did put together, you had asked for some recommendations on some items. So I do have those presented. We can discuss over an hour since I just handed them out. You can take them home and think about them. I did put together a table to kind of show what our current zonings are and what the differences are in them.
The memo, January second, is what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, a lot of paper up here.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I don't know why I didn't email that out to you, but I didn't. So I am recommending adding the assisted living definition and allowing it as a conditional or special use in most of the residential areas. And then as a permitted use in the apartment districts and the light commercial districts.
You want to talk about that a little bit and why you ended up there as a conditional use for residential but permitted in the others?
I think with the, within the residential districts because it would be more of a multi-family. In a single family, you'd want to put some controls as far as screening and, I mean, we have some of those built in, but there might want to be some additional parking and traffic.
And to be clear, the conditional use permit process comes through us. We have the ability to make those determinations, recommendations for each individual property as they come up based on size and area and.
And it's a public hearing and the properties are how they find.
Yeah, I'm just making sure everybody understands why we.
So I feel like in a residential area, I think it fits, but I feel like it needs some discussion
Yep.
before just being allowed. And nursing homes are currently allowed in light commercial. Um, they're a little bit heavier of a use than an assisted living. Assisted living doesn't require as much of nursing staff. And as far as traffic in and out, I think that that makes sense for it to be a permanent use. I don't know that it makes sense to have them in an industrial area.
Agreed.
Any other questions on the assisted living portion? Accessory uses. I don't, my recommendation is to define subordinate a little bit more, but I also know that planning in the past has not wanted to do that. Because of some of the older properties where maybe the house is smaller and they do want a larger garage to fit both cars in. So I just, there's a lot of areas where people are wanting to get a rather large garage that is significantly larger or taller than adjacent properties that make the neighborhood maybe not look as tidy as it could.
But when that comes to us, we have the ability to make that decision for individual properties, right?
Not the way it's currently written. Right now, accessory uses, as long as subordinate's not really defined well. As far as, is it subordinate in size or is it subordinate in use?
Okay.
So I think that it's been interpreted that as long as it's subordinate in use, it can be whatever size. There was a time where it was, um, a garage or an accessory structure couldn't be larger than a thousand square feet. I could see where maybe some of the larger lots, having it larger would be fine.
So let's have some discussion about that. How does everybody feel about? Anybody have an opinion? The way it's written now, you can put a garage as big as you would like and it could take up your entire backyard.
As long as it meets the setbacks.
Right, but that's the only limitation.
Right.
Including height.
Thirty-five feet is the highest you can have in a single family, but you can't go that high.
Do we want to limit that or we want to allow that?
Well, I think I've got one of those structures on my street and it certainly looks odd. The, the folks don't live there anymore and they did have a motorhome and I understood the, their reasoning for that large of a structure. But it certainly doesn't fit with the design or the, the size of everything around it. And I think that that should be taken into consideration.
And part of my recommendation of having, and I know it doesn't put size on it, but at least saying subordinate in size is, if you don't have that, then they could build whatever they want. But if somebody were to want to try to apply for variance, then you could consider on a, if it's restricted, they could still come for, and planning could then look at it or board a zoning appeals on an individual basis, based on certain criteria, although some of those might be difficult to meet.
I'm pretty hesitant to put numbers on it. And the main reason is I have a house and it has a detached garage. The garage is detached because it sat wonky on the lot and I didn't like it, so I just made two separate squares and got them where I wanted them. But because my house is two stories, my footprint itself isn't very big. And I don't know for sure, but my garage is about the same size as my house. So if what we're talking about is you can't have this square be bigger than this square, then I think I have a problem with that because I don't even know if, if I am. Because I don't even know if, if I am applying to that and I'm in an area with. An HOA and a whole bunch of other requirements that I have to meet. So it makes sense to me to, to take it on a case by case basis and allow individuals and their neighbors to come to some sort of agreement. Um, and I don't want to restrict too much, but I also don't want my neighbor to have a two-story. Forty-foot long barn in his backyard if it doesn't apply or doesn't fit in the neighborhood. So I'd like to somehow get to a system where. We can allow most reasonable things and discuss things as they start to become unreasonable.
And I think, um. I think one way to kind of go with your situation would maybe be. The square footage doesn't exceed ninety percent of the square footage, finished square footage or above ground square footage of the house.
The wording itself is.
Or, you know, can't be larger, taller than the house on that property.
And, and this only applies to accessory structures too, because there's another house that I know of where the square footage of the garage is larger than the square footage of the house. And it's completely legal because it's all one.
Right.
Building and if that's how you want to build your house, that's fine, but. I just don't want to get ourselves painted into a corner here where we're gonna allow some stuff that we really don't want to allow. But I don't also want to make this so restrictive that we just can't do.
Individuals.
Yeah, yeah. So. I am, I, I understand where you're going with the subordinate, as long as it's done correctly, I'm fine with it. Um, and maybe square footage is the answer. Is that the only real requirement for accessory uses that we are talking about here?
That's really the only change, yes.
Okay, any other discussion on accessory uses? I don't know that I gave you any actual direction there, but.
No, but I can look at some different options and bring back some options. And if you don't like those, you can continue to keep it the way it is.
Okay.
Then we discussed maximum lot coverage, um, and you had asked for information. But again, I don't think the planning necessarily wanted to limit maximum lot coverage. We do have it in the commercial areas and multifamily areas as well as zero lot line. Um, so I did do some research. I mean, I, it is more that have a percentage than those that don't, but it's pretty close to what's going on in the surrounding areas. Those that do put maxims on lot coverage are thirty to thirty-five percent. I was thinking fifty percent, but.
Is that for all uses?
It's any structure. And I'm sure a lot of it does tie into drainage and water impacts.
So any discussion on maximum lot coverage? Right now, we have no requirement at all.
As long as you're within the setbacks, you can. And there's some distances between buildings, but. Three feet between structures.
What defines coverage?
Buildings.
Just buildings.
Right, it doesn't tie into, um, driveways.
Okay, but if I have a pool, that's an accessory structure, right?
That would be, yes.
And if my backyard is all pool, then I've got way more than thirty-five percent coverage.
I don't know. I don't remember how, I'd have to read it again to see how, when the pools would be.
Well, if it's an accessory structure, I gotta believe that it applies to the coverage and. I don't know, everybody in town's got a pool, but most of them don't have a whole lot of grass in their backyard.
Right, no, I agree.
I just want to make sure that if, if we go this way, we know exactly what we're talking about before we.
Sounds good. I can do more research on this one.
Okay.
And then as far as zoning districts. We have a lot of residential that's never used.
So simplify?
I feel like we should simplify. My recommendation would be to remove the AA, single family, AB and AC.
And those get folded into?
The, pretty much all would be in the AA, triple A for the most part.
Why are they separated now?
The. The AB, AA was what we always had. So it met with the standards of a city with services. Um, that the requirements, but would be larger lot developments. The AB and the AC and the triple A were added when the city was aggressively annexing or attempting to aggressively annex properties and planning at that time felt that. If we're bringing them in against their will, we need to at least accommodate the living conditions that, or the zoning conditions that they have right now. So planning at that time adopted those regulations.
I'm gonna ask this question. We don't want to actively annex aggressively anyone at this point, do we? I say that because we haven't discussed that for as long as I've been here.
I, I think it was attempted at one time and discovered that.
It was pretty unpopular.
Not the route that the city wanted to take. And it was a different time and a different.
Yeah.
Mindset.
I think that I'm, would be okay with removing those, especially now that I know why they were added in the first place.
Because we did annex some of them, there, the triple A zoning is in effect in some properties.
Still covers all of them, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so they could all.
Okay.
They would come in as non-conforming if they don't meet those requirements.
Yeah.
But I think if somebody wants to be in. Then they want to be a city and they are okay with meeting the city departments.
Okay. Any other items for that? Any other discussion for that?
Well, I personally don't see the purpose of the hotel and motel district, but.
Do we not, what?
We have a separate district for hotels and motels. We could incorporate those into one of the commercial districts. But right now, they would go through a zone change for hotel and motel. Which we do have for the two hotels.
We have a separate district just for them. What about that setup is beneficial to us or them?
I mean, it does restrict sizes and sizes of the actual units, but I don't. I don't see the point in it, but it has been that way. For at least twenty-two years.
Does it restrict the size of the hotel?
Not of the hotel, but it does of the different rooms.
Okay, I'll apologize for not knowing the hotel zoning code as well as I should, but it, it limits the room size?
If I remember it correctly and I did.
So this is why the sleep-in doesn't have a penthouse suite?
Well, I don't, I think it's a minimum, not a maximum. Okay. Dwelling unit area regulations. So each dwelling unit should have a primary room containing a hundred and fifty square feet of floor area. Other habitable rooms are seventy square feet each. Talks about having a separate bathroom. I just, and it does have separate screening. But I believe that that screening would all be handled within the screening regulations that we already have.
For commercial properties, yeah.
And then, um. The setbacks wouldn't still be handled in their commercial.
I, I don't see it as a pressing issue, honestly. Unless you know of a hotel or two that are planning on coming. But if you feel like we need to. Limit the code and fold that into commercial. I don't really see, I don't really see that it makes all that much difference, but.
I didn't include it on the list because it doesn't hurt anything to have it there, but it also, I don't. It seems like it takes up extra space that. But it, it doesn't hurt being there. I'm just giving my personal opinion. I don't see the point in it.
Anybody else feel strongly one way or the other?
Would you be lumping it in with light commercial then, D?
Um, D probably as a conditional use would be my recommendation and permitted and heavy. Cause I don't know that. It makes sense on Main Street, but it would on Broadway. Without certain conditions. But it's fine where it is too.
Anybody else have any discussion on hotels?
Let's leave it.
If we don't have a pressing proposal for a new hotel. Why bother with it now?
I think I, I agree.
Sounds good.
All right. So do you need a motion from us?
Nope. We're just continuing on the review. We haven't even come close to finishing.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion on the review of the zoning ordinance before we move on?
I would just say study more of the zoning districts in case you have any extra questions before we move on to the next section, which would be definitions.
Okay.
The overlays in particular.
Uh, no correspondence and information reading or any committee updates?
Uh, HFI and the school district are, um, starting to, uh, work on, um, the Wabah Home Show, which is February sixth, so we'll be putting some things together for that to showcase the city and the school district.
Any other committee updates? Okay, no off agenda items?
Nope.
And item nine.
I will second that.
Thank you, yes. We're gonna be here all night. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, everybody.